On time, there's some snacks over here. I'm going to do some quick introductions. And I want to, first of all, I want to thank all of you for being here. I think we have enough chairs, but if not, one of the members, maybe Russ will grab some more. So make yourself comfortable. Coffee is on the counter, snacks there, water. I will tell you a little bit about why we do this and what to expect today. My name is Karen Anisi, and I'm one of six board members in the Boulevard Neighborhood Association. Quickly, if the six of you will just stand up so people know who you are. We won't make introductions, but there's names in front of you, in front of all the board members, and you're welcome to talk with them a little bit later. The Boulevard Neighborhood Association is an all-volunteer organization, close to 40 years old. The reason it was formed is that some very visionary people decided to preserve the neighborhood with the National Trust for Historic Preservation by seeking a historic residential neighborhood. Residential is the operative word, and that designation was done by going door-to-door and getting signatures in which the majority of people agreed that they wanted to preserve the areas that line both sides of the median, from alley to alley, end to end. And we were granted that designation. And shortly thereafter, people said, well, you know, like world heritage sites, these historic districts, when they're named, it's not a forever designation. It's based on criteria that make it worthy for historic preservation. And we were the second district in the city, the first being the Main Avenue or the Main Street District. The difference between the Main Street and the Boulevard or the Boulevard Neighborhood District is that one is obviously commercial and one is residential. So the, once we got the designation, people said, what can we do to encourage and educate the preservation of our homes and churches? Churches were platted on Third Avenue along with the homes. And the Second Avenue was the government district, the government entity. So we made it our mission to really encourage people to be both neighborly and conscious of what's needed to preserve their homes. Many of the residents on Third served terms on the Historic Preservation Board, which is a city board. We have nothing to do with the influence of the Historic Preservation Board, but that is the entity that we go to when we are seeking to do things like make changes in our home. So the reason we have a forum is that over the years, a number of neighborhoods said, you know, you may have some uniqueness in that you are adjacent to the downtown. However, the same issues in your neighborhood are the issues we have in our neighborhood. So often, they would come to our table and they would say, we have this concern. And we've tried to reach out and reach out to them and say, you know, the best neighborhood is a neighborhood in which neighbors are neighborly. So there are many forums that come before the, with, for the city council candidates. This is the one that's for the person who just lives in the community and wants to meet and greet the candidates and be able to ask questions. So we've been doing this for more than a couple of decades. This year, we had a number of people who submitted questions and asked that that question or some form of it be included in those that we ask all the candidates. You'll see behind the candidates, there's questions A through H. If you submitted one, thank you very much for doing so. We wrote them on placards because they came in after, pretty much after we had already made a determination, what are the common neighborhood issues and concerns that is shared throughout the city. I've asked the candidates just to sign up for one of them and just address it. And that's really kind of an icebreaker. The real icebreaker is that they will have one minute, and they can start in any order they want, to say whatever they want to say. Mr. Russ Kimball, who is on our Board of Directors, is going to hold up placards that say 30 seconds, stop, is there a 15? Yeah, 30, 15, and stop. So they, they'll know where they are in their answers. Now, after work, or at any time, you can grab some refreshments. You can grab any one of these people and say, well, it looks like Gilda Yazi answered question D. I would like what your point of view is on question D. So that feel free to, that's why we call it a forum and a meet and greet. So on that note, what I'm going to do is, who would like to open? All right, Carter Rogers, introduce yourself, stand up. And we are recording, by the way. Excuse me, close the door, yes. We are recording, and you know, for the purpose that there are a number of people that could not be here today, and they wanted to see if we would have something on YouTube or something afterward, and we haven't worked that out yet. So if one of you wants to do that for us, we're an all-volunteer organization. We'll take your effort, we'll take your help.
Give it to the microphone.
Yeah, should they be standing somewhere?
That's not for the speakers.
If you'll just point the microphone toward you. I was expecting people to be sitting down so we won't prepare for a roaming.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we start, can I ask for a couple of the VNA members? We need some more chairs.
There are chairs up here.
There are some chairs here, I'll grab them. Thank you, I'll get them, just a sec.
There's chairs here, and here.
Whenever you're ready, you start.
Pick the college kid for the awkward start, I apologize. Anyway, hello, everyone, thank you for coming to today's event. My name is Carter Rogers, and I'm running for Durango City Council. And one of the biggest reasons I'm running for Durango City Council is I feel the messaging and the action of city council in recent years especially has really gotten away from our core values here in Durango. What are, what are our city leaders doing for you at home here in Durango? Not just the tourists. I think tourists are very important in our economy. However, I think we need to be way more responsible in going about marketing and bringing those tourists here to Durango. We also need to look at the negative impacts of what that has caused on our community, especially in terms of housing. And we need to get back to focusing on residents here in Durango. That's why I'm running. Thank you all again for coming, and thanks to the VNA for hosting today.
Hello, everyone, my name is Harrison Wendt, I'm running for Durango City Council. I am so honored to be here today, thank you to the VNA and to all of the residents who show such a strong passion for voting and for our city elections, it's incredible. This morning, I was at church, and we had a topic about vulnerability. And that was something that really spoke to me today because I'm looking at all these candidates, and it's, it's an incredible thing for us to be, be doing. We are, we are vulnerable, and we are putting ourselves out there to do something incredible. So congratulations to all the candidates as well. I am running to bring compassion and collaboration to Durango City Council. It's clear that our current council is not acting in the most civil manner, and we need to work together to create a council that serves everyone in our community. I moved to Durango for its beauty, I stayed because of its people, and I am honored to potentially serve the people of Durango. Thank you.
Save the best for the middle. My name's Dave Woodruff, I am also running for Durango City Council. I have called Durango home for 18-plus years, January of 2005, I moved here. I've operated a business in downtown Durango for 10. Sometimes if you want to look at Steamworks, I've also been here 17 years running a business in downtown Durango. So I understand what it, what the opportunities are for running a business, and having that sense and bringing that sense to council. Additionally, I understand what the workforce challenges are. What are our people, everybody here, facing on a day-to-day basis? So I think it's important to have compassion, but that is only commensurate on accountability. So I'm super hopeful that we have a great opportunity to do some great things here in Durango. And, you know, we are here today, to Harrison's point, we're, we're vulnerable and putting ourselves out there. So I'm excited that we are able to move Durango in a better direction forward. My last thing is that I will bring a common ground approach to council for everyone, so, thank you.
Hello, my name is Douglas Snow, I was born and raised here in Durango, Colorado. As far as I know, I'm one of the few natives that has run for city council in a while. I would like to, one of the reasons, one of the many reasons I'm running for city council is I want to be able to give back to the community that I grew up in. I have seen things change, I've seen the city council, you know, go up and down. I'm not that great of a public speaker, I've never done this. I never thought that I would see myself running for any kind of public office. And I just want to give back to Durango and everybody that has brought me to this point. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Gilda Yazi, and I have been a long-term resident here in Durango. I graduated from Fort Lewis College in 1997 out of the business school. I've always been concerned about the quality of life here in Durango, concerning sustainability, natural resources, attainable housing, and also trying to be more inclusive in the community. And I feel that we have made strides in a lot of these areas. And what I would like to do is push forward and continue being more inclusive, be more diverse, and also working very hard to try to attain sustainable housing for our workforce. Because I think that we're being priced out of the real estate market, and that's something that we do need to address. And my signs and my cards are in the back there. So on the way out, go ahead and pick some up, and at any time that you see me, go ahead and talk to me.
Gilda, would you like to stay back at the mic because I'm going to call on you? You circled one of the items here, and since you're there right now. The item, she circled item D, and I will read the question out loud to you. She's already had a chance to look at it. What is your level of support for the next step downtown, for bump outs, and any changes you would propose? So Gilda is going to answer that question. The others can answer it later as well, but she has the floor on that one because that was her selective question.
Alrighty, as most of you may have read in the Durango Herald when we did the interview for our upcoming nomination, I did say that I was against changing the character of downtown Durango. And one of the major reasons why I was against it, because I didn't think that the process to get to next steps was very inclusive. There were a lot of people who got left out of the surveys. The surveys happened during COVID, and during that time, we were more concerned about our health needs. And I think that in our community, everybody needs a seat at the table. The business community has to be informed and be part of the discussion about how the nature of Durango is changing. Because in Durango, the term indices bake into our character. We need to support that. And so basically, my level of support for the next steps is very low.
Okay, who would like to take the next question that you've circled that you want to answer? Anyone? You want to go next? Okay, Harrison, you want me to read it, or you want to just summarize it as the Camino del Rio underpass?
I will summarize it as the Camino del Rio underpass, which has been talked about for years. I'm approaching this question with support of the underpass. Of course, with a lot of community involvement and, and having to figure out how, how we will fund this project. It's, it's crucial to connecting our downtown business district, our central business district, and our River Trail. And that is just increased business for our downtown businesses, and I, I think it's a really important step. And instead of, you know, looking forward on the next step project, which hasn't involved our community, and as I originally stated, I was in favor. After talking to community members, I have evolved and realized I'm not in favor of the next step. And so I think that this would be a great, a great step forward in, in connecting and making our downtown even more vibrant.
Dave, you want to take a crack at question F?
Sure.
You can read it out loud if you want to.
Of course, cars speeding through side streets and residential neighborhoods strategically avoid stop signs. Children and the elderly are endangered. What will you do? The low-hanging fruit here is enforcement, you know? But talking to Chief Brammer, there's not a surplus of police officers going around right now. So I think it's going to have to be probably a pretty decent outreach, an advocacy and educational effort to have people truly understand. Having, you know, maybe more signage, I think, could be important. Is this okay that I'm sending them? Okay. I, I feel like there could be maybe some more robust signage. You know, we've seen a couple of those stop signs that, that are blinking red because they're behind a sign. If we just have more, maybe more signs that say, hey, children at play, or, you know, something of that nature, I think there could be an opportunity there. And then, yeah, I think, you know, maybe working with our local newspapers to, you know, maybe publish some editorials or some advocacy pieces just to kind of generally get, get some awareness out that there are people that are impacted on a daily basis by cars speed.
Could the speakers stand up, please?
Sure.
Before they speak? So Carter, I've heard the directive here, you're last up. So Carter's, Carter's question is, how would you like to see the lodgers tax be spent? By what mechanism should the funds be distributed?
Awesome, so sweet. As many of you know, we passed a lodger's tax. And just recently, our city council decided to retain those funds from the lodger's tax. And I believe it's somewhere around the ballpark of 55% of that is going to sustainable tourism. And why I do the quote signs is because I don't really believe that it's being used in a sustainable way. So one way I would like to see the lodger's tax reallocated and spent is actually providing our homeless and unhoused residents here in Durango an opportunity to get on their feet, get a job, be employed, and get access to their basic needs, such as food, water, shelter. Giving them that first step and actually securing employment, very similar to something like Albuquerque, New Mexico has done, which with their, there's a Better Way program in which the city of Albuquerque actually employed their houseless and homeless residents and gave them an opportunity to work and get back on their feet and get a stable form of life going. So that's what I'm a big proponent of.
Thank you, candidates, we're now going to, oh, I'm sorry.
You signed up the one.
Oh, I'm so sorry, Harrison?
No, Douglas.
Doug, did you sign up? B, okay, Doug, I can see you're writing there. Doug. The question is, redirecting traffic circulation as proposed on Main will push more traffic into neighborhoods east of the downtown. What will you do to address this impact?
Okay, I'd like to start by saying that I'm not in favor of this. Parking is an issue. Parking has always been an issue in town. What this is going to do is going to take parking away from downtown on Main, which is going to make a little bit more of an issue for people to get to businesses on Main, like Old Timers, Tucson's Barber Shop, and any of the others down on Main, like the train station. And then it'll also cause disruptions to the public transit because the trolley runs the trolley down along Main. So that's going to have to be redirected, and it's going to make it harder for people on public transit to get downtown.
Thank you, Douglas, I apologize for not seeing.
No problem.
So the, we are now going to start with the portion of the forum in which the opening question will be directed by Kristin Bushnell Phillips. We will, who would like to answer the first question? Because we're going to go around, we're going to rotate through. Who would like to answer the first, and then all of you will answer the first question? Okay. Do you want to start with Dave? Okay, we're going to start with David. And she will read the question. Thank you for standing up.
For all my short people in back.
Okay. With apparent tension among our elected officials, especially between those representing the city and county, and also the school district, how would you go about making a difference?
So I've, I've had the opportunity to be in leadership and mentorship for a good part of my business career, especially here in Durango. If you've ever come into one of my restaurants, you know the hospitality is forefront in my mind, and how we engage not only our guests, how we engage each other's coworkers, but also how we engage our community. Those are the three basic tenants in my mind of what hospitality is. So just because I changed industries and go from a restaurant and transition over to public office, hospitality is the same. Danny Meyer, who, long story, but he's a big to-do in New York. He basically says that hospitality is two prepositions, it's four and two. You're either doing something for someone or to someone. Four typically is in the name of hospitality, two typically is not. So in, if you're looking at it in that regard, whenever we're in public office, what are we doing for our community? Are we battling back and forth with the county? Are we battling back and forth as counselors? Or are we doing and advocating for the people of Durango? So being in hospitality, I'm a common ground, like, let's all do this together and move forward together.
Okay, so now Carter, you will be next, answering the same question.
So sweet, I would like to just start by pointing out that ethics investigations and hundreds of thousands of our taxpayer dollars do not benefit us here in Durango. And what we need to do as a city council and as city leaders is step up and recognize when you've been heard and be okay, and realize that you have been heard, and see that your ideas are either reflected or not. And I think it just simply boils down to coming to a consensus as our city leaders, saying this is the plan we're running with, this is what we're going to do. It might step on a few toes, honestly, sometimes that's what leadership is. But we have to set a direction of where our city's going to go, and we need to go with that. And so that's, thank you.
You know, I have heard that there is a little bit of controversy on city council, and I would assume that they could take care of their internal strife as they work along. Working with the agencies, say, the city and county, I think they've worked pretty well together on trying to accomplish larger issues. So I don't think there's a lot of tension right there. You know, if there are tensions that develop with the next council, I would hope that we would be able to have some type of mediation, somebody there to, if people need a little bit of training how to work in committees, maybe go that direction. In my work life, I've worked with very diverse communities, and I've always been successful in trying to come to resolutions. And I hope to do that on the next city council. So thank you.
As I've been knocking doors in Durango and talking to voters, there's, there's two things I hear. It's that housing is a main concern and that the state of our current council is a main concern. And there is no reason that we can't be working together. I know that I ran two years ago, and I may have come across as probably the most controversial candidate you've seen in city council in a while. And I'm here to talk to you and come to you today to tell you that I have evolved, and I understand the importance of working with my fellow counselors, and the importance of, of, of learning and listening and, and, and being cooperative. There is, there is so much that we can do when we work together and we listen to each other and we hear each other. And even when we disagree, that's okay, we can move past it. We have enough strife on national politics, we don't need it in Durango, not at all. Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to put in that I would like to try to work with all the other different entities outside of Durango. That would mean taking time to sit down with the different people that are on the different boards, talking with them, getting their viewpoints, trying to get a better idea of where they're trying to come from, where they're trying to go, and trying to keep things from getting bogged down and keep moving forward with it, stuff as much as possible, and, thank you.
Okay, the next question will be directed by Mike Todd, and the first person to answer will be Carter, who will move around the table.
Homelessness is a concern of many Durangans. What are the specific, underlying specific responsibilities, if any, of the city of Durango toward assisting the homeless?
First off, thank you for that question. I believe that it is the responsibility of the city to be able to provide at least basic necessities for our homeless and unhoused residents here in Durango. What I mean by that is, we need some, some form of managed camp. We can't get around that. There are certain homeless people that do not want to get out from outside. And so providing them with even something as simple as a basic address not only protects them and helps them get a more secure life, it also protects our first responders, such as police officers, paramedics who are responding to those scenes. I think back to the Purple Cliffs that we had that recently closed, and how dangerous it was for our first responders going in to there not knowing what was where in that camp, because it just wasn't managed properly. So I think the first responsibility and step of the city of Durango is to create and establish a managed camp for our unhoused population. Thank you.
Gilda.
Okay, how I would address homelessness in Durango would be, first, I would like to look at how we're interacting with, you know, the state, county, city, and local stakeholders to see if we could revamp some of the programs that have been established. I do think that having some type of regional camp, transitional housing could be in the picture. But we would have to go back and look through land availability, funding, and so forth. But I think those trains of thought are in place, and we can move forward with that. But we also have to think about the fact that this issue is comprehensive. It's going to take more than the city of Durango to solve the local homelessness population, which is estimated to be between 200 and 400 people. And thank you.
So the question was, specific responsibilities that the city has for addressing homelessness. I would argue that the city does have a responsibility for addressing homelessness. I think that we need to look at this as an issue that affects everyone. Homeless people are still residents of Durango. And my job as a city counselor is to serve everyone of Durango. Whether it's a managed camp, whether it's transitional housing, we have to explore options. I know you asked for specific responsibilities, and I, I would be honest with you all and tell you that none of us here have answers to solving homelessness. But like Gilda said, we, we have to work with our local entities to address this issue. The county is crucial, the state is crucial. And we have to find ways to address this issue. Everyone, all humans, in my opinion, deserve shelter and dignity.
Homelessness in the area is an issue that is always going to be a problem, no matter what we do today or tomorrow or in the future. It's always going to be a problem that's there. The city also has to look at all the businesses in town. You can't just have the homeless people camping everywhere because it will impact the residents, the businesses that are within the area, like the camps across the river from what used to be the Red Line, which is now the Doubletree. We do have, the city will have Uh, we do have, the city will have an ability to help out with the homelessness. And I think providing, uh, camping locations is going to be key uh, because if they are just spread out all over the place, it makes it harder for police, fire, emergency services to be provided if needed.
Um, first we need to start with humanity and compassion, you know? Um, I think it's important that we address this, um, with those two forefront in mind. You know, we look at the 2020 strategic plan for homelessness, uh, that the city and county put together. Um, you know, we can look back and hindsight's always 2020. We can look and see what worked, what didn't work, um, and better pass forward. Um, the Purple Cliffs, um, managed camp was kind of an impromptu camp after, um, the fire evacuated El Lobito. So, it wasn't necessarily, uh, of, an intentional, uh, camp, but then it just became one. So, it's important to recognize that, um, we do need a managed camp and we can hopefully take some of the silver linings that we learned and apply those to something further down the road. At the end of the day, we need more acute services available. We need addiction treatment and prevention services. And we also need to have, um, a more robust, uh, mental crisis, uh, center to be able to help those that are, that are most in need. Um, we should be able to help people that want to be helped. Um, but that comes with accountability and making sure that people want to get out of homelessness.
Okay, the next question will be directed by Tom Darnell. And Gilda, you will answer this question first.
The city council election is a nonpartisan race. It's in our charter. Why are you, what are you doing to avoid the perception of political party support?
It is a nonpartisan race, it's a nonpartisan council. I'm trying my best to be open-minded, which I do in my everyday life. I look at all aspects of people's opinions and try to be equal in what people say, irregardless of what their philosophies are. I do believe in inclusiveness. So I want anybody who has alternative opinions to come and talk to me so that can also be part of my mindset. Having an open council who's willing to listen to the community's thoughts and input is why we're running for office. We believe in representatives from the community coming to us and letting us know what their thoughts are. A lot of times it's not on two, uh, trains of thoughts that are either one side or the other side. It's like, how do you feel as a person? What would you like me to do? And that's how I hope I can, um, follow that kind of train of thought.
The city council, uh, elections are nonpartisan. Um, and in full transparency, I have worked with the Democratic Party, uh, in the last two years. Um, and I, uh, this last election cycle, I knocked on thousands of doors in La Plata County. Um, a lot of them were, uh, Republican doors. And as a Democrat, I, I was able to talk to these Republicans and, 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 and find common ground. Um, and that is exactly what I want to bring to city council. Uh, we can have these conversations. Um, my party does not define who I am. I am here to serve all the people of Durango. And all the people of Durango matter, regardless of political affiliation. They are everything, they are our city.
I find that, uh, inner fighting between Democrats and Republicans doesn't do us any good. When I look out and see all of you, I don't see Republicans or Democrats, I just see voters. So, uh... Being influenced by Democrat or Republican decisions, I just see it as all just one spectrum that it all falls underneath.
Uh, purple is my favorite color. See, I did there, red, green. Tough crowd, tough crowd. Um, so, being a nonpartisan race, uh, we all represent Durango. Um, I think everybody here has, has said the same, uh, thing. We are running on foundational local issues that impact our daily lives. You know, we live, uh, or we've moved here with intention. Um, typically, um, we have moved here because we value a certain way of life. Um, and it's important that we represent those values that we hold so dearly um, to, to continue to do, um, those things that, that we find that are important. Um, you know, it's important that, um, you know, we, we make sure that we move, make these decisions with intention, with the, with the greater scope of, um, of, of that in mind. We're not always gonna agree, but I think we all can agree that we want to see Durango move forward in a positive direction. Can I say one thing for just like five seconds?
Five seconds, last one.
I have not taken any donations from anybody.
Sweet. So, um, I'm very similar to the other candidates in the fact that I like to find common ground with the residents of Durango when I speak to them. Um, because at the end of the day, we're all human and we all have something that we can all agree upon. Um, so finding where we can all come together and support ideas, um, is one of the, one of the key things and staying nonpartisan and, and non-affiliated at the local level. Um, I'm a firm believer in that national politics has no level, or has no space at the local level, um, just because of how broken the national system is right now. Um, and so, I'm, I'm very upfront with people. I tell people I'm, uh, fiscally conservative and, and socially liberal. Um, so, I'm very open about that, but always open to finding common ground and keeping an open mind, especially at the local level. Um, thanks.
The next question will be asked by Kristin Bushnell Phillips. Stand up, please.
If, if Durango already is the number one tourism town in Colorado, is it wise to create a downtown similar to the model many aspiring tourism communities have already done?
That's me, Harrison. Right, 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 more specifically, can you explain that a little bit, please?
She can reread the question.
Okay.
You can answer it any way you want in one minute.
If Durango already is the number one tourism town in Colorado, is it wise to create a downtown similar to the model many aspiring tourism communities have already done?
Uh, I'm gonna suspect that this is a, a question on, uh, whether we should turn downtown into pedestrian mall, uh, which other, with, which other communities have done. Um, while I will always advocate for improved infrastructure, basic needs, accessibility, um, I don't believe that, uh, a pedestrian mall is in the best interest of our community and our city right now. We have some serious budgeting shortfalls. I sat through the city council retreat in, uh, early February. We have some serious budget shortfalls, uh, including transportation and housing. Uh, at this point, it would be irresponsible to continue on this path of looking at, uh, a new and improved downtown, uh, particularly in the next step project. Uh, again, I will advocate for improved infrastructure, but, uh, I think that we need to take a step back, listen to the community, and, uh, move forward from there.
Well, this seems like one of those monkey see, monkey do kind of situations. Just because other people are doing this doesn't mean we should do it. You know, we should keep Durango as historic as it is because if we go and change what was historically here, it's not exactly the same as what it was. So it might not bring in more people. It might drive more people away.
Um... I agree that, um, we don't want a pedestrian mall downtown. Um, the, the, the hindsight, uh, that we can look and see, a lot of those just simply don't work. Um, I feel that, um, there's an opportunity to, to garner and build a downtown that, that we all want to be in, whether tourism or local alike. I think there's an opportunity to, to meld, uh, those two together. Um, I also agree that we need to have, um, ADA compliance, um, and make that more accessible for everybody, um, not just, uh, those that are able-bodied. It's important that we provide, um, pull-ins and pull-outs so people can drop off, um, the elderly or, um, people that need, uh, better access to, uh, downtown. Um, I think there's a way to maintain historical integrity and maintain that, but we can still look and, and envision what we anticipate downtown being, you know? Um, we, we paved downtown all, oh, gosh. Oh, see you later.
Um, I would just like to say that, um, I do not think that turning downtown into, into a pedestrian mall is a great idea. Um, I think of a good family friend that I have who works for Boulder Police Department, um, and, and how much he talks about just the chaos and madness that their pedestrian mall is as a law enforcement officer. And I also go back to thinking about our first responders and what that would mean for them, turning our main avenue into a pedestrian mall. Um, there's a lot of logistical pieces that play into that, um, whether it be getting police officers on foot, how are they gonna patrol downtown? Um, things like that we really need to consider. Um, and also, I would like to thank Harrison for acknowledging that he has kind of evolved on this idea. Um, but I would also say that if it's taken you only a month to evolve on this idea, it sounds more like flip-flopping to me. Um, so, what, we need to stand up for what we believe in and, uh, stick to that. So, um, that's what I hope to bring to council.
I've always maintained that the reason people come to Durango is the charming, historic, cultural character that downtown presents to the general public. People come here to see how beautiful Durango is with the train, the river, the college, all the activity downtown, the uniqueness of colors and the blends when it's the fall, when the leaves fall in downtown, it's just beautiful. It is just beautiful. That's why people come here. That's why I love Durango. So, uh, no, I'm not in agreement with changing the character of downtown. And I do think that we need to work on the infrastructure without disturbing the character of downtown. And that can be researched and possibly attained. So I agree with Harrison that, that fact. Okay, thank you.
The next question will be asked by Mike. And I think, uh, Doug, you're the, you're next up, so you're gonna be starting this question.
Hey, you know this question is coming.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, I know, all the questions are coming. Lack of affordable rentals and housing is detrimental to the current, current and future well-being of our community. What specific, specific proposals would you put forth in the next year to increase the supply of both affordable and workforce rentals and housing? And don't just focus on housing, rentals and housing.
Does anyone need that question repeated?
Okay, uh...
He's gonna repeat it, just because it was a little bit handled up.
Lack of affordable rentals and housing is detrimental to the current and future well-being of our community. What specific proposals would you put forth in the next year to increase the supply of both affordable and workforce rentals and housing?
Well, I would have to get together with all the different industries, contractors, opticians, plumbers, HVAC, and get their opinion, which would help me build a better opinion. And obviously, uh, some of the code issues and the planning issues to, uh, get stuff started, to get finishes going to be an issue. Perhaps the city is going to have to come in and be a contractor themselves to organize different areas for having low-income, middle-income, and maybe even a higher-income bracket area built to where it's not just being targeted towards all the, uh, higher-end development. And so the city's going to have to get into it. And we're gonna have to look at the different areas around Durango that obviously we'd have to expand into to get all this additional housing built for everybody. And it's not always going to...
Thank you, Doug.
Thank you. Um, man, you really touched on something we haven't really talked about. Um, it's my hope to build on the current successes of city council. Um, you know, one thing that, um, that they think they've done really well so far, Best Western Conversion is gonna convert 120 units, so it's gonna be studio, one and two-bedroom units. Um, we also have the, um, Gage Apartments, that's gonna be 89 rental units, which is gonna be north of Home Depot. Uh, we also have the BLD Apartments, which is gonna be at Three Springs near the Maverick Gas Station, which is gonna be 492 units. Um, and then 25 of those are gonna be 80 to 225% AMID, or rent-restricted. And then 15 Florida Road, which is gonna be 130 units, 50% will be rental, um, and then 50% will be rent-restricted. So, um, I say that because, again, we can build on these successes, but it's my intention to also make sure that we don't lose steam on any of these projects. This is really critically important that we don't just sit here and talk about all these, these things that we have, the, for potential future inventory, but just to make sure that we can continue striving and building on those successes to make sure we have something that's gonna hit the ground and, and open up, uh, opportunities for, for people moving in.
First, I'd like to start by saying I, I agree with Dave here, um, that I don't think any of us sitting here today want to stall current efforts, um, for rental units and housing units for our workforce here in Durango. Um, but I would also point to the fact that we do have a lot of stock here right now that is tied up in vacation rentals. Um, so Second and Third Avenues here in Durango are the only regulated zones, um, in the city of Durango when it comes to vacation rentals, such as Airbnb, VRBO. So what I'm proposing is extending the existing regulation here in Durango to encompass all of our zones and districts here in Durango and effectively cap the max number of vacation rentals within Durango city limits. Um, currently, there are about 125 active vacation rentals off Second and Third Avenues. Um, a few of those properties don't lie on Second and Third Avenue, but a majority of them do. Um, and so, I'm a big proponent of cracking down on the vacation rental industry and bringing up some of those available stock, um, for our workforce here in Durango as well as our residents. Um, and then another thing is deed restrictions. Um, deed restrictions are very important when it comes to housing and attaining housing, um, for our workforce. So, thank you.
Affordable rentals. Well, I had a chance yesterday to go down to the rec center and meet with Moxie and the people who helped put together the Westside Mobile Home, um, Housing Project. Now, they were suggesting that would, they be, they could go ahead and do more, state mortgage relief. There's a couple of the granting programs to help with putting out deed-restricted properties. But then we would also have to look at, um, property rights because we all have a, a great variety of people who are land owners and stakeholders in the community. And we have a generous community to provide for affordable rental. We just have to be careful about how we move forward and be concerned about providing for people who are in need.
Uh, this is an incredibly important question. And, uh, workforce rentals, uh, and, uh, affordable housing are crucial to the advancement and development of our community and remaining a sustainable community for all. Uh, I wanna look at a couple things. Uh, we have, uh, 2005 sales tax, which is sunsetting, um, and we have to reauthorize that. Uh, it would be my suggestion to look at that. Um, we have about a $4.2 million shortfall in our housing budget right now, uh, in which we need to, uh, make that up. And I would, I would recommend that we look at that, uh, 2005 sales tax to, um, fit that in. Uh, they, they, they talk about, well, it costs about an average of 80K per rental unit, um, to offset, uh, or in some terms subsidize or incentivize and to, and pay for, uh, purchasing. Um, and, uh, with that, I would also look at, um, I look at the fair share program and, uh, you know, re-adopting something that's a little more, um, current with our times and our current needs. Right now, it's 16% of units, or you can opt to pay out of... Right now, it's 16% of units, or you can opt to pay out of it.
Thank you. I'm going to add a follow-up question in, which is a question that is very similar to how that was somewhat revised. If you want to answer it, you can. If you want to modify it, you can. You don't need to. And here was the original question. Some developers appear to exploit the city by saying their projects will create more affordable housing, but the end product only caters to wealthy homebuyers. How will you ensure developers honor their representations? Again, it's optional. If you want to answer it, you can.
You do by holding them accountable. You know, you make them sign a contract, and whether you're talking about rent restrictions or deed restrictions or whatever else, you got to hold their feet to the fire. So I think it's important that whenever we're incentivized, and especially where all of a sudden, as taxpayers, putting skin in the game for these builders and developers to build these much-needed units, we now have the ability to really hold our feet to the fire and really make sure that we're holding them accountable, and I think that's probably a good part of it.
Does anyone have something else they want to say to that?
I would just like to add on to changing the fair share program, which allot 16% of our rental or of a developer's units to be affordable, or you can opt to pay out of that. I would, this was adopted in 2009, and I would argue that part of this question would have to do with this as well. How do we encourage developers to build, you know, affordable rentals, but also holding them accountable? And I think Dave kind of touched on that pretty well. Thank you.
Yes, I do think that we should put in some, exactly what Harrison said, put a hold on developers buying out of the green deed restrictions or whatever when they develop their projects. I think that would help a lot, and I also think that being able to get land at a reduced rate, maybe through granting or some kind of real estate deals, would help in developing long-term solutions for the unhoused and the people who need workforce housing. It's a complicated issue.
Is developers making any kind of misrepresentation should be looked at the same thing as kind of like if somebody is making a statement to Congress and they lie? You know, they should be held accountable, you know, whether it's putting a fine or levy on their business license or making it harder for them to have a next development in Durango or in the surrounding areas. They need to be held accountable, because that's just not something that should be taken lightly, and it's just not kosher.
I would just say, I've heard a lot of the candidates talking about how we should be looking at holding these developers accountable, whether it be through maybe getting rid of the fee system they can opt into to not have those attainable housing units. I do not think that is the way to go with this. I'm very pro-business and pro-developer. I don't think we should be putting up roadblocks for developers that want to come to Durango and develop in our community. However, I do think maybe we should reassess what amount those fines are that they can opt into, or fees, excuse me, to get out of having to have those attainable units. Maybe we look at increasing those, but I don't think we just outright put up a roadblock and say, if you're not going to meet these standards, you can't develop in Durango. I think that is very bad, and that would be bad for our community.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by Tom Darnell.
Should the city build a parking garage, and why?
Do you want to hear it again?
Yes. Yeah, you know, I feel like, you know, we, when the, I forget who did the study, the parking study for Durango about a year and change ago, they said that, you know, parking is fine, we don't need a parking garage. As we can all attest to here, it is a challenge at times to find a parking spot where you want to park for both convenience and safety. So, yeah, I think it would be good, you know, parking garages are notorious for being money sucks, but I think there's hopefully some creative solutions. We're not the only municipality that is probably having this issue and this problem, so surely somebody out there has a blueprint, a winning blueprint, that we can figure out that could work for us and our specific needs. But yes, I think we could use a parking structure, especially as we look at what the next 10, 20, 30 years looks like for Durango. I'd rather be planning out for something that's going to come further down the road and be looking at it instead of looking for it. Thank you.
I'd first like to start by saying, I think the recent parking issues we've been dealing with here in Durango are a great example of a place where we can improve in our public transportation services that the city does offer, and maybe we look at providing more parking spaces or sectioning off parking spaces for our elderly population and disabled population to make downtown more accessible while also looking at what our public transit is providing for our citizens in Durango, where those taxpayer dollars are going and how we can expand that service and make parking less of an issue, so.
Yes, I do believe we could put up a parking garage. Originally, there was plans in the Transit Center plans to put up a parking structure there. That could probably be revisited and possibly planned for in the future. But yes, we do need to put up a parking structure in Durango.
It's no doubt, we've all dealt with parking issues in Durango. It's incredibly frustrating. I would be in support of building a parking structure. I think we would have to be very careful about how we move forward with it, though. First of all, we need to look at funding in our budget. There has to be an extra level of financial responsibility when we look at these things. Transportation has a $600,000 a year shortfall currently. That, if we don't deal with that now, we have the potential of transportation literally driving off the cliff in the next two years. That is crucial to our workforce, and it is crucial to expanding our affordable housing. A proper funded and well-expanded transportation system could help deal with the parking issues. But to answer the question entirely, I would be in support of a parking garage through a lot of community feedback and figuring out how we could do it without not messing up the historic downtown.
I do believe the city's been talking about a parking garage for maybe like the last 15, 20 years, and it just hasn't gone anywhere yet. You know, so the biggest thing would be finding where to put the parking garage. There are some buildings down along Main that do have parking garages, but, you know, they're just a single unit, like underneath the main mall and a couple of the other banks on Main. We'd have to figure out where it's going to go, and maybe if we did make one, we could turn it into a hybrid unit to where there's like apartments or even building or business spaces on top.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by Kristin Bushnell Phillips.
Short and sweet, do you support dissolving city boards and commissions?
So I know there's a lot of mixed feelings on this, especially from volunteers who sit on the boards, who are going to be affected by the proposed dissolving of these boards and commissions. However, I think looking at it from a fiscal responsibility viewpoint, I think it's pretty essential that we kind of back down and cut back on the bureaucratic bloat that our city faces. I mean, we have 19,000 residents and quite a few boards and commissions and people that sit on those boards, and a lot of those members do get paid, that's taxpayer money. Some of them, of course, are volunteer boards, but I think it's about time the city of Durango sits down and sees where we're putting our money to, and if all these boards and commissions are actually slowing progress or helping progress. I do support dissolving these boards.
When I went to school, I took a government class that said that we had a representative government, and that meant participation from the public who came and expressed their views to the stakeholders, to leadership in the community, and they would let us know what direction their certain particular committee wanted to proceed. I do not believe in dissolving any boards. I think we need more people involved in the government. That's how America is. Everybody's opinion counts. I would hope that the current city council would wait until the new council is installed to make any of those decisions, but no, I am against dissolving any boards.
I too am against dissolving any of the boards. Democracy is the foundation of our country, and hearing from our people and our city residents is crucial to the advancement of our community and hearing about the issues that matter to them. While there is, the main concern of these boards right now is the financial impact. For me, having an increased, you know, people who are engaged in our local government is more important to me than that financial aspect of it. Durango residents are everything, and they deserve to feel heard, and it's not like we have a problem filling these boards. In fact, I've applied for boards and been declined because we have too many people applying for some of them. They need to stay. The boards need to stay, and the commissions need to stay.
I would ask, why is it being proposed that these boards are going to be dissolved? Is it because there's grievances, or are there other reasons? Just dissolving them, it kind of seems to give the appearance that somebody's trying to shut down perhaps somebody else's opinion. And I would have to find out why these boards are, they're wanting to shut these down, but I would feel strongly against shutting them down, because it sort of feels like if all of a sudden, people are calling for shutting down half of the fire department or half the police department, or like, say, half of the hospital. You know, it just might not be something that should be done, or if it's being done, it should be done in a lot slower period over a couple of years instead of just, okay, they're done, you're out of here.
The short answer is no. I think this is a really good opportunity for community engagement, civic participation. I think that is foundational to our democracy in general, but also to, I think, what's important for us down here in Durango. We, again, we have a specific value of what we value Durango as, and we enjoy that. And part of that is because, you know, people need to flip and listen to the community sometimes instead of just hearing from key stakeholders where they're not actually taking the full consideration into account. So should there be some consolidation? I don't know, let's have that conversation. First, I think we need to not have the dissolution of anything, but let's fight that fight another day about what that consolidation could look like, and then how could we maybe be more efficient with our time? But the complete dissolution, absolutely not. I think it's important that we all maintain a voice within our community and within our civic government.
Thank you. The next question will be asked by Tom, oh, sorry, Tom's next, Tom Darnell? No, he messed up a question. Do you want to ask yours next? Go ahead. Sorry, Mike, Tom's asking you next.
This is my most unfavorable question, but it's a good question. This is a question about code enforcement. With uneven citizen compliance on such neighborhood matters as weed control and unshovelled sidewalks, that are really icy, can you suggest an alternative to the present citizen complaint-driven system and turning it into a potential revenue generator?
Do you need to hear it read again?
So again, this is, with uneven citizen compliance on such neighborhood matters as weed control and unshovelled sidewalks, can you suggest an alternative to the present citizen complaint-driven system, turning it into a potential revenue generator?
Okay, who's first?
Am I?
I believe you are, Gilda.
Okay, as to snow removal, I remember a long time when I used to live down on Third Street. All the neighbors, when the snowplows came, they would go to one side of the street, they'd go down, go back to the next side of the street, then they'd allow the snow people to lay the streets, and then everybody would get out and shovel their part of the walk. You know, reminding people that it's their civic duty to snow shovel would be a good start there. As to the weed control, I was on the weed control for La Plata County for, I think, nine years, and weed control is a really toxic way to keep your yard safe. We do need to get after weed control in the city, and to help with that, we just need to educate people that these are the regulations, and usually, once people learn about it, they apply good standards.
Quite the curveball of a question, Mike. So first, I'm going to start with saying that clearly this is an issue, and it's an issue on multiple different facets. Accessibility is important to people. People live their lives in wheelchairs, and if you can't get through the sidewalk to get on your bus, that's an issue. And so code enforcement is crucial. I can't say I would totally be in favor of creating a revenue stream. A lot of times, things happen in our lives, and I would fear that this would be disproportionately effective to people who maybe are low-income or don't necessarily have the resources. So I would be hesitant to say yes to creating an increased fine for a revenue stream for that.
This is actually one of my pet peeves. I see so many sidewalks that get unshovelled. Most of the time, it's the same places year after year. A lot of times, they are college students or people that are in their lower twenties. Perhaps we need to get the residents together to form some sort of like residential meeting group, kind of like the boulevard group, so that we can get together with our other neighbors, and if there are any people that are not able to shovel their sidewalks because they're elderly or older or even being sick, we can help. So like, if you have the person that's, you know, got the snow blower going, it only takes them, you know, like another 30 seconds to a minute to go and do somebody else's sidewalk in front of their house. But I have also seen a lot of businesses this year that have not been shoveling. They might shovel one side of the street but not the other.
I hesitate to create a revenue stream out of this. Like I'm in the same way with Harrison in that I don't want it to turn into a witch hunt, be like, oh, that dude didn't shovel, you know? I'd rather be, let's start knocking on doors. Let's be like, hey, man, you know, is there a reason that you didn't shovel? We all have things, to Harrison's point, happen in our lives, and we don't always get the opportunity to. To Doug's point, you know, when I snow blow out in Three Springs, I do the whole flipping neighborhood and call it a day, because that's what neighbors do. What I don't want, I think, is that we want to see people being nitpicked, but we want to make sure we have access. So what I'm trying to say is that I don't really know how to answer this question, but I don't want to turn this into like, you know, slinging mud because, you know, the city's making money off of somebody else's misfortune or somebody else, you know? We should hold people accountable, but at the same time, let's maybe be a little bit ligh-handed in our approach before we just start going and setting forth fines.
I would have to agree that I don't support turning this into a revenue stream. And honestly, I think the current citizen complaint system is a great way of going about it as well as also just restoring that sense of community. Check in on your neighbors. Knock on their door. Ask them how they're doing, how you can help. And, and that's how we really build a community. And just kind of to Doug's point, talking about a lot of the time it being college kids. I mean, that might be true, but you also have to understand we're out here working two, three, four jobs at a time just to be able to live here in Durango. So it's really hard to find the time to maybe get out and shovel, shovel those sidewalks sometimes, excuse me. So really, we need to also be looking at some of the more core issues here about why affordability and cost of living is going up here in Durango and getting back to those roots before we start maybe looking for a revenue stream for snow shoveling.
Before we go to our last question, just for clarification, the question was addressing the system that it is citizen complaint driven. So in other words, the neighbor calls on their neighbor to complain to code enforcement versus a proactive system like some communities have that, that they remove the calling of the neighbor on each other and rather have a proactive system to enforce whatever the regulation is. I wasn't sure that anyone had understood that, so I want to clarify that for the, for the group. You're welcome. So the last question is going to be asked, the last question of this section is going to be asked by Tom Darnell and the, will be yours. You're the, you're the start now. You're the chosen one.
There is a suspicion that too many council plans and decisions are informally decided off agenda and out of public view. What will you do to restore trust?
I have three key words in my campaign and it's collaboration, compassion, and trust. It's, it's very clear to me that people in Durango are having a hard time trusting our current council. And that is, that's upsetting to me. Local government is so crucial to our, our, our city and, and the advancement and growth of all of us. And so for me, I think just expanding and, and making the online system a little bit better. I can't remember what it's called, but it's where you can search all the documents for city council minutes and stuff. Honestly, I go on there and try to find things and I'm lost within five seconds. And I'm 25. I should be good at computers, but this one is not easy. And just an overall increased transparency from our council. Everyone wants transparency. I'm ready to bring transparency to Durango. Thank you.
Yes, transparency is definitely needed. Perhaps if there are meetings that are taking place that are not within the city council meeting, perhaps those need to be recorded so that they are not off the record, so that they're being moved onto the record. It's kind of hard to come at a viewpoint from this not being, not being into the situation yet and having a hands-on feeling on it. So there needs to be cooperation and openness for that transparency to take place so that the residents aren't feeling disenfranchised.
Obviously transparency is the word of the day on this one, but also I think integrity, you know. I feel that whenever we are putting our hat in the ring for becoming city councilors, there's a certain level of integrity that comes along with, with that decision-making process. So I think I can say for all of us that we've worked hard. You know, I worked hard over the last 18 years to create a good standing within our community, to operate with integrity, to make sure that I'm taking all sides of an issue and, and, and making that, that decision. As, as many of you know, it's not even acting with impropriety, but also acting with the illusion of impropriety. So don't give any of the haters any reason to, to, to think that you're acting with, with impropriety or anything of that nature. Be upfront. Be honest. It's easier to keep track of the truth when you're being honest. If you're lying about it or, or something about it, you have to figure out what it is that, oh, what did I say that one time? I don't remember. So it's important that we remain truthful, operate with integrity, and operate without impropriety.
So when I think about this question, my mind instantly jumps to the recent two open record dispute settlements that the city paid out essentially. Of course, not admitting that they were completely in the wrong, but as a councillor, if elected, I would really be a proponent of minimizing the amount of time that we spend in executive session and really advocating for the recording of those sessions and being willing to say, here's the recording to those executive sessions if you've requested it, and being fully transparent and just realizing that as a leader, sometimes you're going to have to make tough calls when it comes to being transparent. But I think it's always in the best interest of residents and citizens of any town or city for their local government to be open and transparent with them in that regard. So that's what I would strive for.
Well, you know, we have this open records government and I think for the most part, it works pretty good. There's problems with people wanting to know what happens in executive sessions on council. Sometimes those are private matters and they have to remain sealed. You know, I was a little bit concerned about the draft financial documents that was in the ruling that the judge released to Simmons. Okay, that gets out to the public. It's a draft. You're going to have to follow up with the precise document to make sure that draft document doesn't take off and become what the public believes. There's a whole lot to this being distrustful. You know, I don't think it's that distrustful. I think that this education has to be done with the public as to how these administrative functions work. And I think as a council member, I will work harder to make sure that we are more transparent and that if there is a true executive session, it just has to do, deal with personnel issues. Tony, do you want to close up with the last question?
I'd like to pose the last question for this afternoon. Questioner age is on the back wall. In the city's push for greater density, what would you do to preserve our green spaces such as Twin Buttes, Mason and Buckley Park?
Parks in general. Parks in general.
Yeah, parks in general, green spaces.
Parks in general. So it's behind you. If you want to look at it, it's written as item H. And who would like to start? Do you want to start that, Doug? I think you're, you're up.
Well, I think the greatest way to preserve those spaces is to keep them there and not to try to develop it into something else. Growing up here in Durango, I spent a lot of time in the different parks around town playing school sports. And I think that we just need to keep them. Perhaps even adding in more parks as we build out. Trying to find the like, the right locations for those places when the city expands is going to be a effort. Just because there's going to be a push to develop all that into developed spaces.
I think the best way for preservation is through maintenance. Making sure that we are taking care of our assets that we've worked hard to acquire over the years. The 2005 sales tax, a quarter of some of that was towards new asset acquisition. And so I think it's important to look at, you know, there's not a ton of open space newly to acquire. So maybe if we do renew that tax, maybe some of that money could go towards maintenance. The Parks and Rec Department gave a good presentation on what their, what their units are looking like right now and, and ideas for capital improvements. And so it's important to have conversations with the Parks and Rec Department to ensure that we're keeping and adequately maintaining our parks and rec, keeping them safe, keeping them beautiful, making sure that we're, you know, keeping them green. And so I think that's probably the best way to, to preserve them is through taking care of what, what we do have currently.
I think the first step to preserving our parks, and especially with Buckley Park, is, is actually following through as a city and completing the MOU to, to save Buckley from any sort of development. So that was kind of put on the back burner during COVID and never really followed through on. So revisiting that MOU, making sure that's solidified to protect Buckley Park from any kind of development. And then further also, I would support looking at our land use code and seeing if we can maybe even form some kind of special like park districts for those parks and, and be able to actually single out where we can put more resources into developing and preserving our green spaces that already exist here in Durango.
Yes, we're always pushing for greater density. I think part of this, part of the solution would be to understand that we only have a finite amount of area here in Durango and that what we do have is park and green areas and quiet spots we need to maintain for future generations. So I believe a little education would, would be in good order for the city of Durango. And I do think the Park and Rec Department has done an excellent job in preserving, you know, our trails, our parks and the outdoor livelihood in this community because we do thrive on tourism and part of that is the beauty of the city to maintain a beautiful place for the tourists to come and the community and the children to enjoy. Thank you.
I want to start by saying that I will always value and protect green space. It's, it's crucial and important for our city. But when we look at greater density and how important density is for affordable housing and housing in general, we need to really take a step back and look at where we can infill in our current city. There's space. I've had conversations with community members about, you know, reducing the lot size requirements for ADUs to increase that sort of, that sort of housing options, which would, which would help in return, in my opinion, protect that green space from development because we are continuing that infill in our, in our city limits.
Okay, so it looks like this portion is complete. You are welcome, anyone to, this is the meet and greet component. Have some refreshments, mill around, take some of these signs home. I want to thank you again for your participation. You know, when we look at neighborhoods, there's certainly more that unites us than divides us. The issues in one neighborhood are the issues in another neighborhood. So again, we thank you for your participation in submitting the questions. And they are all on the back wall and they're free to answer any of those. If you want to grab one by the elbow to go and get their perspective.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for joining, thank you for joining the livestream. Have a nice day.